Well, there's never a good time, right? Apparently kids aren't enough.
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our study session. We'll call this studies meeting to order. Study meeting of the West Valley City Council, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, four thirty P M. We're in the multi-purpose room of West Valley City Hall. I'd like to excuse Mayor Lang this evening. All other members of the council are present, either in person or electronically. Councilmember Nordfeld, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon electronically. We've heard from Tom.
I have not.
Councilmember Hune will be arriving. And Councilmember Christiansen. We'd also like to welcome at the front, Mr. E. Folpeely, our city manager, and Ms. Nicole K. Mac, our city recorder. We'll move to the approval of our minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve the August twenty-sixth minutes.
Motion second. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
I didn't hear Scott.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll review the agenda for the regular meeting. Have there been any changes or anything? Okay.
Mayor Proton, would, just a question on tonight's agenda. Would the council be open to continuing the change to modify the zone changes? But we just would like to maybe discuss that a little further before we approve this. I think that we need to look at the higher artillery roads to make sure that residents that live on those can maintain the fifty percent. I know we're increasing it, but while also having enough either circular driveway or something to back into to pull out on those high volume roads. So I don't know if the council will be willing to just continue it so we can discuss a little further or but I'm not ready to vote on it.
I agree. I'd like to talk about a little bit more.
Okay.
Do we disagree with some of the things that are in there? Or because we can always talk about that.
I just want to, you know, if we're going to make change, and I really appreciate the simplification of what we're doing here, but I don't know if we're under I'm praying to get it done quickly, but if we could look at that and also look at the the high-volume roads at the same time. Just think, could be.
Mayor Proton, I believe, Councilmember Harmon raised his hand.
Councilman Harmon?
I was just looking for a thumbs up, so I'm good with waiting.
Okay. Yeah. Looks like it's majority, so I guess we'll wait.
A motion to that.
Okay. Anything else on the regular agenda?
If we do have people come, because that was a public, will we let them speak? Or I think that would be good. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, award ceremonies. Proclamation scheduled for September twenty-third. Mr. Thomas, you have the recognition of clean and beautiful award winners.
Mayor Protem, Council, thank you so much for the time. Craig Thomas with the Community Engagement and Culture Department. It's that time of year again where our Clean and Beautiful Committee has been busy with a bunch of volunteer judges. As a reminder, the city is divided into nineteen areas of relatively uniform size for housing units. This year, we're anticipating close to seventy-six awards for per area. Each of the judges is encouraged to present a Waterwise Award as one of the four. So there's a good batch of award winners that will be coming in in two weeks. We'll have a reception for them at five-thirty, and then they'll proceed into City Council at six-thirty. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty standard. They're awesome. They're great yards. It's just an awesome opportunity for us to celebrate residents and business owners and property owners that do a great job of keeping our community nice and clean.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Item six A. The staff has asked that we move this towards the end of our agenda. One of the consultants that worked on it is tied up in another meeting, and he'd like to be at least on Zoom to answer any questions. So we'll move that down. We'll start with our resolutions, twenty-five, one-twenty-nine. Chief Evans, would you like to talk about County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Thank you. The other role is with emergency management. Every five years, the federal government passed down to the state, the county, we have to do a mitigation plan for the city. This countywide mitigation plan, we were involved in, the part we were, was West Valley City. So what it entails is we look at all the hazards. We do a risk analysis of what could happen in the city. Obviously, some of the big ones for us is earthquake, winter weather events. And then we try to, in the mitigation plan, say how we're going to try to alleviate some of the risks. As you can imagine with an earthquake, that's pretty hard to do because you really don't know how or what is going to happen. So it just goes through, lists our resources, what we can do, and some of the shortfalls that we have. So this plan was submitted to the county. What we need to do is sign off, and then all the cities that sign off, it'll be part of the county plan, which will go to the state and then to the fed, federal government.
Okay. Any questions?
If you're having a hard time sleeping, it's about a hundred and fifty pages you can read, but pretty thrilling.
Okay.
Thanks.
You'll let me know, Councilman Harmon. Okay. Next, twenty-five dash one-thirty. Approval, approve the purchase of license plate readers and related services. Deputy Chief Fosmo.
You got me, sir. Excellent. Yeah. Good evening, Council. Mike Fosmo, Deputy Chief with the Police Department. I phoned in for Chief Jacobs this evening. This is a platform that's similar to ALPR readers that we're currently using. We've, for the last four or five years, we've been using Motorola Solutions and Flock Safety. Same technology. I've got my I U sergeant over here. He and his team have been testing this Genetek product for the last several months. And we're just having a much more efficient, efficient return on our services upwards of sixty-six percent in our reads for license plate technology. So this is for wanted persons, stolen vehicles, missing people, and we've had a lot of success over the years with the use of this technology. What we're asking to do is move in the direction of this, a different company called Genetech. They're the longest-standing company around that's been using, utilizing this type of technology. The budget, budgeted funds that we've had in the previous years is the same. About thirty thousand for Motorola Solutions and thirty thousand for Flock Safety. The additional five thousand that you see there, five thousand six hundred is for video management system product that we would receive in addition to the Genetech ALPR product. So essentially, what we're able to do is roll in all of our ALPR product into the Genetech system, and then also we would attach a VMS system or a video management system with that product that would allow us to integrate a lot more of our citywide efforts with surveillance cameras, pole cameras, ALPR stuff, and then we we also have visions of integrating with parks and rec and business, local businesses that would be able to streamline into this video management system as well. So the the funds were already allocated in previous years. We've been using that for other services. This is just a move to a different company that we're seeing a lot better service and product from. Any questions for me?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-five, one-thirty-one. Ran agreement with the Utah Division of Arts and Museums. Mr. Thomas.
Again, this is a, this is kind of like an annual thing for us, I think. This is for approval of accepting a grant from the Utah Division of Arts and museums. It is thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars this year. It's considerably less than what it has been in the past. If you remember, this is a two-year grant that they give out. It runs from, what, July first, two thousand twenty-five until June thirtieth? You know, two years from now. Typically, the grant is close to twice this much. Unfortunately, this data has cut this fund, so this year's allotment for us, or a grant award this year is thirty-nine thousand, two hundred. This will be for the July first to June thirtieth period of the grant. It supports general programming at the Cultural Center. It can be used for payroll, can be used for marketing materials, it can be used for copying. I mean, it's pretty general in operation support of the programs we do at the Cultural Center.
They give us any reason for the slashing, cutting?
The state reduced the funds that went to the department this year, though the division had less money to divvy out to the grant applicants. When we went to, we actually asked the division kind of how we did on the scoring and the ranking of the grant application. And we were pretty much stellar. We were off the chart good because we're good. But it was purely just a state funding cut.
Okay.
So.
You mentioned two-year, but your slide is one-year.
This is the first year's portion. The second year's portion is anticipated to be similar. They won't know that dollar amount until next fiscal year.
So we need to talk to the legislature about getting more money in arts programs.
We want arts and cultural programming, yes.
They must want it. I mean, she was.
They have a division, they have a department, so yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-five, one-three-two. Authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement with Geneva Rock Products. Ms. Knapp?
Good evening. Jody Knapp with Planning and Zoning. So as introduced, this is a development agreement between West Valley City and Geneva Rock. This is for the Geneva Rock facility on sixty-two hundred South. So it's sixty-eight fifty-two West, sixty-two hundred South. So you can see the property here along the Mountain View corridor. And with this, in October of last year, we had a conditional use application, and Geneva proposed to add a hot mix asphalt plant to their facility. And so when they did that, it triggered the requirements in seven-ten, which are landscaping requirements along high image arterials. So that would be the sixty-two hundred South frontage. So at that time, we weren't too sure what the right-of-way looked like, and there were some property line things that we needed to review. And so basically, the requirement was just that the facility meet the seven-ten standards as outlined in the code. So since that time, we've been working with Geneva as well as Public Works, and so I won't steal their thunder because they do have an application on here this evening as well. But basically, in looking at the cross-section, we need an additional twelve feet of pavement, and then there will be a ten-foot wide sidewalk that is part of the sixty-two hundred South improvements. So we're left with sort of a gap with where the property line is and then the edge of where this facility is. So I'm just going to go through the photos here first, but it's just a typical batch plant facility. Then you can see the frontage here, just the improvements are currently not in. And then just looking a little bit further, moving west. So what the cross-section looks like, and the picture is very small, but basically what we typically do is have a setback that's measured twenty feet from the property line. But in this case, it starts right here. So this is the farthest west of the property. The back of the sidewalk is the property line there, and it starts at twenty feet. But then, as you move east, getting closer to Mountain View, that gap gets a little bit further. So it increases to twenty, like this section here, the gap from the sidewalk to where the landscaping ends is twenty feet. And then, as you get right to Mountain View corridor, this measurement is thirty feet, but you can see basically the edge of their development is the property line. So what we're proposing is to not require the setback from the property line, but basically have them landscape as they're shown here. And it's just following the existing contours. So we're not requiring them to move the batch plant or do anything in addition, but just making sure that the existing space that's there gets completed. And so what that would look like is basically doing the seven-ten landscaping requirements from twenty feet behind the sidewalk. And they're doing the one tree every thirty feet and the minimum of four shrubs per tree, and then two different rock materials which comply with seven-ten. But basically, anywhere where there's a difference there, they're just going to maintain and improve that with rock. And so they just are able to maintain that setback from the sidewalk and not mess with the property line or move the interior of their facility. So that's just the information that's spelled out in the development agreement. There's some questions?
Questions? And quiet tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Twenty-five, one-thirty-three. And this is the Public Works part of the presentation.
This is, yep. I appreciate Jody's introduction of our, to our item. This is a reimbursement agreement with Geneva Rock Company to pay them to widen the road. So as she described, they are doing improvements that trigger, they're doing side improvements that trigger off-site improvements. And but outside of those improvements that we can require them to build is kind of a widening of the roadway for future capacity. And so sixty-two hundred South is on our roadway impact fee facility plan. We collect road impact fees throughout the city to build certain improvements to account for the additional traffic that comes from development. And this is one of the places where that traffic is anticipated to go. And so we are this, this agreement will pay Geneva to build additional twelve feet of pavement for, for a future widening. So currently, that, that pavement will be unused. We'll stripe, it'll be three lanes one in each direction as it currently is now, but we'll, but we are taking advantage of their opportunities, of the opportunity that we have with them to to build the curb gutter and the sidewalk and then to improve the landscaping as well. So this reimbursement agreement is approximately six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, comes from road impact fees. And if there are any questions, I will gladly entertain them.
The road impact fees are not in there without impacting other projects.
Yes.
Cover that.
Yeah. And there are only a handful of projects that are eligible for to even accept these kinds of funds and, and now this is really the only place that we've got to put them.
How is that amount?
How did we come up with the amounts? We, we get their bids to build the roadway and and we take apart their bid and, and kind of back calculate how much is ours versus how much is theirs? And up with it. So this is a concrete pavement roadway, as you'll recall, which is much more expensive to build than asphalt, but that road's been in place for maybe ten or twelve years, and it's a concrete road that's in excellent condition. And so we're really grateful for the, I mean, it's a, we've planned it to be a concrete road and have known that it's going to be pretty expensive to widen it as we, as we deal with that in the future, but we don't anticipate having a lot of maintenance work for a long time, so.
You know what the total cost is? That's our portion, do you know?
I don't, I'm not prepared for that. They're, they're basically building the curb and gutter, some pavement, and and then this, and also a five-foot sidewalk, and we've asked them to build a ten-foot sidewalk, so we've because we want to have a connection between a future trail on Mountain View corridor, the existing trail on Mountain View corridor and a future trail on SR one-eleven. So we, we felt that it's on our active transportation plan, but we felt like it's a great connection and a good opportunity to get that built as well.
Build a nowhere, nowhere for now.
Any other questions? Hey. Mr. Johnson. See, act two.
Yeah. So this is, we're requesting authorization from the council to award a construction contract to Arrow Landscape Construction, roughly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we're asking for three hundred and ten thousand dollars in authorization to go and repair sidewalks in many locations. In fact, we're calling this the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six sidewalk repair project, but it's the West Sidewalk Repair Project. And this is only repairing sidewalk locations west of forty-eight hundred west. And we're preparing another contract to do the same kind of thing, east of forty-eight hundred west. And this particular one will repair seventy-four locations. Mostly, most of these have been impacted by trees, and so we're, it's pretty expensive because we're dealing with trees and the sidewalk repair, but we've been working with property owners to notify them if the tree is in the park strip and also to get permission from them if the tree is on private property to get their trees taken care of so that we're not dealing with this on an ongoing basis as we have been, if we don't, and we would be if we didn't deal with the trees at the current time. So yeah, we've got, this one has, there's seventy-nine trees, and we're going to repair about eighteen hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk. And it's, yeah, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
There are a map, anything showing where these are for the seventy-four location?
There is, in the, in the issue paper, there's a link to the map.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't put that on the slide. That might have been helpful information, but it is available to you.
What are we doing to replace the trees we're removing?
This project, we've not made any plans to replace any of these trees. Yeah, we've not done any, anything in that case. Most of these are trees that are that are in the park strips that, that were planted by somebody's parents, you know, in the late eighties. And we've not made any plans to replace them. The residents certainly could. We would ask that they select trees that are allowed in the ordinance that would not damage the concrete, but we're not planning to replace the concrete, to replace the trees.
I, I just like that Tree City USA designation.
We still plant a lot of street trees, but we aren't on this project.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, act three.
All right. Act three is a betterment agreement with the Utah Department of Transportation at forty-one, or excuse me, forty-seven hundred South and Bangator, as UDOT was working on putting their plan together. We requested certain aesthetic betterments, among which are the powder coating of the traffic signals so that they're at the black paint. That's an aesthetic improvement that, that we requested of UDOT. On the, the bridge, it's not, it's not been installed yet, but on the bridge on forty-seven hundred South, as you go northbound underneath forty-seventh, it will say West Valley City as you've seen in, in other cities. And then we also requested a decorative parapet wall, or excuse me, a fence on top of the concrete parapet over the bridge, that, that decorative wall is installed. And then also a black wrought iron fence around the pond, the city-maintained pond on Orleans Way. And so all of these betterments equal a total of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, and UDOT comes to these intersection projects with a one-hundred thousand dollar credit that they will put towards betterments. And we share that credit with Taylorsville City at this particular section. And so you reduce the fifty thousand dollar credit that UDOT brings to the table, and this, this betterment costs the city roughly seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Is it just West Valley City, or we put the logo?
It'll just be West Valley City on that bridge parapet. And then Taylorsville City will have the same thing going southbound on their side. But there, there's not a logo on the bridge parapet. If, if it was a UDOT's policy, they have a policy that addresses these types of things. And I believe if there, if it was a bridge going, if, if forty, excuse me, if Bangator was going over forty-seventh, then you could put a a logo on the abutment, the wall abutment going east and west. But this is just the, the name of the city.
Hey. Any other questions? Like all good football games?
You want quarter four?
This is the fourth quarter, most important quarter, but this is very simple, too. I believe we spoke a couple of weeks ago about a traffic signal going in at thirty-two forty South on fifty-six hundred West at the driveway to Centennial Park and Chick-fil-A and Walmart. We've since been working with, well, we, we have on the agenda tonight, an, an issue paper for a temporary construction easement with Chick-fil-A between the city and Chick-fil-A, and this is a memorandum of understanding that gives UDOT legal access to go work in our temporary construction easement. And as an update to the council, we've been talking with UDOT about this traffic signal, this, the timing on this traffic signal, and also the pedestrian signal on thirty-five hundred South at Garden Gate Avenue. And it's looking like both of them are most likely next year. They're kind of an early action item for, for UDOT next year.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda scheduled for September twenty-third. Resolution twenty-five, one-thirty-seven, and twenty-five, one-thirty-eight, and one-thirty-nine. They're all typical easements and deeds. Any questions from the council? Any of the other ones that you want to include with the consent agenda?
Was age the same thing as twenty-five, one-thirty-three? I think we could include twenty-five, one-thirty-six. It looks the same.
So include one-thirty-eight or one-thirty-six with the consent agenda?
I'm one-thirty-five.
Okay.
One-three.
Get all of those?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Is the staff ready for item six A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pastrick? Would you like to come up and talk about impact fees?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Council. So this is something we try to do every so many years to update our impact fees. So the last update started back in twenty nineteen, but it wasn't actually adopted until twenty twenty-one, but you can imagine over the last, you know, five-ish years, inflation has been much higher than, than typical. And so that's one of the And so that's one of the main reasons that we felt it was time to do an update to our impact fees. So just to to give you an overview of the documents that are in front of you. So you have what's referred to as an impact fee facilities plan, which uh, basically determines the level of service for the different types of fees that we collect. So parks, police, fire, roads, drainage. Then you have the impact fee analysis, which uh, sets the fees, um, determines what kind of fees we can charge to maintain our level of service. And then you have the, uh, the ordinance that then actually changes our code so that we can charge those new fees. Um, maybe just to kind of give you an example with the, the park impact fees. So in a, in a nutshell, we uh, first determine what is service and, and parks would be the easier example compared to roads, but we look at all the park facilities in the city, so all the land, all the improvements, and come up with a value for that. And then look at the population of the city and say, okay, on average, we have about, you know, X dollar, uh, dollars of improvements per person in the city. And then we can project then how much we think the city's going to grow over the next several years and say, in order for us to maintain the same level of park improvements, we need to charge new residents this fee. So that's uh, in, in essence, was that, what the, the fee does. And one of the big changes this go around compared to last time, as you can imagine, land costs and construction costs are much higher than they were five years ago. So that's what's driving a lot of the, the change or the need for a new fee is just the cost of whether it's land or uh, road improvements or parks, uh, all those things have gone up substantially. So uh, we're here to then propose that um, the council adopt this new impact fee facilities plan, impact fee analysis, and then the next thing on the agenda is the ordinance that would actually adopt the new fees. I know that's a mouthful.
The questions?
I had a couple. Just looking at some of the increases, um, somewhere the roads for freestanding discount store were a hundred and twenty-four percent. Road shopping center were ninety-two percent. And roads for, for eighty-two. And so how do you balance the keeping that it's high enough to cover that growth, but also my discouraging development if someone came in and like, well, that's too high.
Yeah, so to your question, we, we didn't have the flexibility to charge less. So that these represent, these fees represent the maximum we can charge. The council could decide, and, and this has been done many, many years ago, the council at the time decided to charge only a, a percentage of what we could uh, pay or what we could charge. But uh, more recently, we've been charging the full amount. Um, part of the reason for the, the discrepancy or the, the reason why it's a different percentage is that um, there are many variables in this analysis. So part of it is looking at uh, over time, the, the number of trips to different uses gets refined by, you know, the entities that, that generate that kind of data, like the ITE basically that generates that. So um, that's why you don't see like an, an equal percentage across the board because there are um, different factors at play for different uses, if that makes sense. But to answer your question, uh, it is possible to charge a fee less than uh, what the maximum is, but our suggestion to staff would be to charge what, what we are showing in the analysis.
So what would happen on a, like I say, a redevelopment from something that has higher trips and it reduces the trips based on whatever the redevelopment is or?
So in that case, we would not charge fees. Uh, now we have, what, what's more common, we'll have someone uh, redevelop a site and put something that's more intense. So what we do is we look at what was there before, you know, gen- or calculate what the fee would have been for the current use and then compare that with the new use and charge the difference. So that's, that's pretty common and we do essentially give them a credit in that case. But if the new use actually generates less, then we just would not charge them.
Other questions? Okay. Can you move on with our information items? Utopia update, Ms. Cottle?
Hi, council. Thank you so much for letting me be here. It's like coming home. I see all my old, my old friends and some new friends. Um, and I am not Roger. Roger is out of town, wanted me to please uh, tell you that he is so appreciative of your support. And of course, as you know, Roger is um, so integral and important to Utopia and such a, such a superstar. That's where he is today is being a superstar out there in the nation with regards to open access networks. And so he wanted to send his regards and, and sent the second string. So I'm so happy to be with you today and I was coming in, everything looks so beautiful and, and it just feels like coming home. Thanks for having me and I'll cruise through. Um, please, as you all, so you all know me, I can get rolling. So if you have questions, you just wave me down and I'll stop. As you know, we like to give an annual update about how Utopia, how your fiber network is doing so that the council is aware and can um, speak with their constituency as needed and just so that you're aware of the great news. Uh, as you are, you know, West Valley was one of the original, if not the actual original founder of Utopia, very first city. So you can see the founding members and then our partner cities here. Our most recent partner city is Bountiful. Um, I barely got Utopia about maybe a month ago now. So happy I can have a Zoom call without dropping. Um, and Bountiful was finished, the build was completed a full year in advance of the scheduled build. So it went very well, very successful and things are going great there. Um, this is the timeline of Utopia all the way back to two thousand and four. Um, as you can see, we kind of have some orange here, those first phase one builds, uh, as we were, as we Utopia were just trying to get our legs under us, there were, there were some initial um, initial tough years. Since twenty, two thousand nine, you see it's marked as two thousand and ten here, since two thousand and nine, all of the fiber builds have um, zero tax dollar and they're all paid for by subscriber. All very successful, all meeting their goals. And you can see the cities that have been added on from two thousand and nine really to twenty twenty-five and beyond. Um, that, you can see the, the difference there. Uh, a couple of accomplishments, and I think most of you are familiar, so I won't go through everything on the list here, but we are Utopia, you are the largest open access network in the United States. We have two hundred and fifty thousand subs, possible subscribers that we pass, um, twenty-three citywide projects. Um, that is by far the largest in the country. We have the fastest speeds based on how we've set up our network. And as you know, that also future proofs our network as well. Um, so we are able now to offer the ten gigabit speed at residential and the hundred and four hundred at business. And in fact, we provide the largest um, connection to the University of Utah of four hundred gigabits. They have a four hundred gigabit connection up there. So it's kind of fun to um, be working with them on that. Uh, we have the most competitive, as you know, we have nineteen providers on our, on our network, which provides a lot of competition, a lot of differentiation from a type of service that you would like. So if you need specialty service, there's a provider for you. The other thing that I wasn't aware of fully that Roger has drilled into my mind is that most of those service providers are homegrown Utah service, service providers. So very supportive of the Utah marketplace and Utah ecosystem. Um, we work really closely with the UEN network and have been awarded three hundred and fifty new schools over the last little while, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. Um, that's a place, as you know, as members of the board and as members of Utopia that we've been directed to be in, making sure we're facilitating education, making sure we're facilitating those things that the community really needs. And so we really strive to do that. Um, as I think you're also aware, the, we're the largest provider of air quality sensors across the state. You may not have been aware of that. So when you look at an air quality map, like go on KSL and you look at it, at an air quality map, where you see the um, most air quality sensors are typically in our Utopia cities because we provide those as a service to the Utopia cities. Um, we also, as you know, have a lot of smart city provisions. So you guys are aware of the wifi in the parks and some of those things. I'll show you a little later, something really cool. We have this um, fire uh, thermal imaging camera that we provide to communities that have wild line interface. And so we have a little um, picture to show you about the Provo Fire, which was about three weeks ago, that will give you an understanding of how that's working for them. Um, the net promoters, pro- promoter score, you've heard Roger talk about this. So this is a, this is a score, we take a survey routinely every year, at least sometimes, sometimes every six months to make sure everybody's happy and to find out if people aren't happy, what we need to do. Um, a plus sixty-three on a net promoter score is basically, would you, would you advise someone to get on this service is kind of the questions that are around that. There are a whole bunch of questions, but that's the general theme of it. Just so you're aware, a plus sixty-three, the, the next closest to us on net promoter score is down below twenty. So we're wildly popular as a service. And when people get on the service, they stay on, as you know, our churn is de minimis. We lose, we don't lose people once they're on our, once they're on our service. It's really exciting. And of course, great Google rating as well. Um, here are the, here are the list of providers. So it's a lot and you can see that they all just ride with us. And I would say most of these, if not all but maybe two are uh, specific Utah companies, homegrown. Hey, one of the things that I think is important to remember, especially as we move into the future uh, with regards to Utopia and the network, is that it was built to be future-proof. You'll remember, some of you that were here in the early days, that was a common question as people didn't understand the technology and how it works. Um, we've built a superior, we as a, when I say we, I mean, the royal we have built a superior system um, in order to provide for these higher, higher needs into the future, but also because we use this particular uh, method, which is actually fiber to the home. So you will sometimes hear other service providers say that they are fiber to the home networks. They actually are what that second on the, on the list is, which means they have fiber to a node. And then from that fiber, there's typically copper that goes to the home, which means you are still then again sharing with your neighbor. So that's the service I just got off of in Bountiful, where I was sharing with my neighbors, a fiber connection that was one point five miles away. And I got to have the lucky joy of sharing that with my five hundred closest friends and it was terrible. And so having direct fiber to the home, even though the upfront cost is, is um, typically a bit more expensive, long range and into the future, we've demonstrated that in churn, in reliability and in future ability, it's the right way to go. So it's a, it's a great and really solid network. The other thing, of course, that you're probably aware of is once these networks are in the ground, they're, they're a valuable asset, just like, just like our other assets. Um, you know, our other utilities that are essential. This one's a very essential and very um, valuable asset as well. We have done a little bit of economic benefit analysis. So there was a study that was done and we also are in the middle of commissioning a study by our own Gardner Institute here in Utah. Um, this particular study that we've based these numbers off of was done by a Chattanooga network. They're the next closest network in size to us, so very comparable. They uh, commissioned a study that just wanted to kind of determine the value in comparison to the incumbent providers that most of the folks that they were working with were on. So you can see here as it relates to West Valley City, um, Utopia saves the average subscribing household twenty-nine dollars a month. And we've based that off of the um, Xfinity non, oops, non-promotional, oh man, non-promotional costs. Um, so you will also see sometimes, some people will say, oh, but I got a fifty-dollar, forty-nine-dollar for six months or something. Those promotional deals sometimes are out there, but these are compared to the standard cost. Um, you can see the West Valley City resident savings, uh, based on the number of subscribers. We're just at six, almost six thousand subscribers here. And then the business savings as well. Um, overall and over time, five hundred and fifty uh, million dollar based on the size relative to the Chattanooga study. So next year, we hope to have a study that's commissioned specifically for Utopia and done specifically for our, for our um, various cities so that, that you can have a, a more specific to you version of this. But this gives you some round number ideas. Um, this is, shows subscribers for the whole network. So this is Utopia, UIA, and all of our partner cities. You can see that we're up above, above that seventy-five, almost to eighty thousand now. Um, you'll probably remember, some of you in this room, the days when we hoped to get above ten thousand subscribers and that was a really big mark. Um, so seventy-five thousand is, is remarkable. And as you can see, has taken a bit of time, but now the, the slope, the hockey stick is getting more significant. Uh, these are subscribers by city. So West Valley is the sort of bluish and you can see there are two blues. You're the blue that goes up highest at the end. Um, so you're the highest blue on the list there. And we'll talk about your specific, um, this is a build-out time, so it did take, as you'll also remember, some of you have been here, it did take West Valley a bit of time to get built out. We're built out all the way and have been since about twenty twenty-two. Uh, so happy to report that. And then uh, here's your subscriber growth. So you can see nice, steady incline. Um, we have seen a very significant bit of growth in the last little while, probably in the last two to three months. And that's a result of a very light touch of door-to-door sales. So we put some door-to-door sales folks into the city, um, again, with very strict uh, directions on how to uh, engage with your residents, but also a very light touch. As you know, you're big city with a lot of households. And so we just touched a very few and our, our goal is to do that in rotating weeks throughout the year. You can see that that really paid off. We, uh, you, in the last few months have had your highest subscriber increase in a long, long time and it's shot right up. I think we added a hundred and seventy-five customers in one month, um, which is a big remarkable increase, um, based on the, the sort of, we've been very steady as a city for, for quite a little while. So that door-to-door um, interaction seems to work really well and will continue to do that unless, of course, we do that in concert with you. And of course, if you as a city said, please, we, we don't want that, we would also be very respectful of that as well. Here's your subscriber map, the red are residential, the blue are business. You can see it's all across the city in pretty significant form there. Um, as I mentioned before, future-proof the, the um, network, we do have a new two-point-five gigabit service. It's remarkable that a lot of people just go right to the hundred, or sorry, not hundred, wow. One gigabit service, but now we're seeing a lot of residential just because the price is not that much different. They just go for the two-point-five. Doesn't make a difference in cost and install, the equipment is um, set for that. So it's great. We've also been able to, in concert with that, lower the price of the ten gig, ten gigabit service. Um, we also have in development a customer app for payment and troubleshooting. As you're also aware, the reason we don't have very much, a very much churn uh, of a churn rate is we really value customer service. And what we learned after those tough first years is that customer satisfaction is huge for a network like this. And so we work really hard to do that. Some of these other things that we're adding are in order to provide that customer service experience. Um, additional smart city applications and deployments, I'll show you this uh, fire camera that I mentioned. So this fire camera is actually in Orem. This mountain is the mountain just above the Y that burned about, like I said, about three weeks ago. What you can see is and, and in your uh, packets, when you, when you go to this, if you click on that link there, it will play the, the uh, reel for you. What you'll see is at some point, this picture on, on the left gets dark because the, the um, smoke and the clouds kind of obscure the view of the flames. But when that happens, if you look at the picture on the right, you'll be able to see that they can still see the hot pots, uh, hotspots because that's an infrared camera. So oh, look, I got it to go. Wow. I don't know how that happened. Technological advances. So you can kind of see how it gets darker over here and it's harder to see the hotspots. And then this, this white um, continues to go through the night. So they know where to do the drops and whatnot. So the first responders in Orem and Provo were able to use this camera to facilitate that through the night and to um, put out the, put out the fire. So it's actually pretty remarkable, that kind of technology uh, is um, that infrared zooming technology is actually experimental, actually put together by some students at BYU that have helped us facilitate that um, that camera. And we have cameras in all the wild line interface city. Um, okay, so as you'll recall, because we were one of the, we, because the royal we were one of these original cities, it's hard for me not to say we still. Um, there are some, there's some bonded indebtedness that Utopia is striving to collect enough money to cover in total. Right now, we're at this point and continuing to add every year additional amounts to your um, distribution. So in twenty twenty-four, we distributed to you one point two, two, eight million dollars and change. So in twenty twenty-four, we distributed to you one point two to eight million dollars in change. Um, this says proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five distribution, but that should say approved. So that's the number that's coming, one point three, uh, with a eighty-nine thousand dollar increase. So we're striving every year, year over year to be able to do that. We have one more year at Utopia where, um, these old bonds have a little bump in the debt service, and that is this year coming up. Once that bump, once we hurdle that bump, if you will, these numbers will start to increase even more dramatically. That, that bump is kind of like a, it's, it, a balloon is too drastic to say, but there's a little bump in our debt service that keeps that requirement for us a little bit higher. And then as we get past twenty twenty-six and into twenty twenty-seven, these numbers will grow, um, even more exponentially than the, than you're seeing here. And, and our goal is to cover the full debt service for you. And, um, we continue to add, as you know, every subscriber that we add gets to that very quickly. Those subscribers are, um, very important in keeping those subscribers on, being able to give this money, um, back to our fledging cities. That's it. Any questions? I can answer any questions for you or, um, anything else? Okay, great. Thank you. So, so happy to see you.
Next. Mr. Bunderson is going to bring in some musing land promptly.
Thank you, Eric Bunderson. City attorney. Um, kind of embarrassing to come after the person who taught me all this. But, um, this, this is a result of the, oh, good. Um, this is a result of a question, uh, the mayor, uh, had for me a couple of weeks ago. She was at one of those, um, community councils and, or the COM, what is that? Committee of Mayors or something like that? Council of Mayors. And, um, uh, and she was in a discussion with someone from Sandy, and that person, um, from Sandy and her were talking about approving zone changes. And, um, she was talking about, well, we, you know, we can't consider economic value when we, when we are doing these zone changes. And the person from Sandy said, what are you talking about? We do that all the time. And so the mayor just called me, and it made me realize, um, you have been so good, and we have been so lucky, and I'm going to knock on wood, that we haven't got into, uh, land use litigation over the last, well, at least the last fourteen years. Um, but even farther back than that, that, uh, I have neglected to do any training whatsoever with you guys. So I'm going to, first of all, um, stop that, and we're going to do some little, just little bits of training on certain subjects. If you have any thing you want me to talk about at the end, I'll tell you what the next subject the mayor wanted to talk about. But, um, uh, we'll certainly do that, and we'll just try to keep it in little bite-sized pieces. Uh, today, we want to focus on, on decision-making and a, as it affects the economic value of the land, of the zones that you are changing. We're going to start with a little quiz. Um, what type of decision-making power do you have on zone changes? Is it judicial, administrative, or legislative?
Legislative.
Thank you. Thank you. Forgot you're on. Yeah, it is legislative. Um, good job. Um, legislative gives you, legislative decision-making is when you are at your most powerful. That gives you broad discretion, and as long as, with very, very few exceptions, which maybe we can talk about on a different train. With very, very few exceptions, i- as long as you are making those legislative zoning decisions based on the health, safety, welfare and comfort of our residents, you're going to be safe. Not to say we, um, can't get sued over something, but, um, if we did, then, um, as long as we, we were making that decision based on those factors, we would be okay, and we would be able to defend it. So how did Sandy screw everything up? Um, they really didn't. But what the mayor was remembering was back in nineteen ninety-eight, um, uh, in a case called either Sandy Investments or Smith Investments. It's listed a couple of different ways. Um, Sandy City got sued and the case went all the way to the Supreme Court. What happened was, way back in the sixties, some, uh, Sandy annexed at the request of some property owners, annexed some land. It was originally zone commercial. They, as the decades went on, they did some studies, and in the nineties, um, they decided that some of the land should be rezoned into residential because of the, I don't know, all the stuff the planner, Steve, all the stuff the planners do, Stephen Jody, um, that, that, that some of the property was too narrow, and it would be better off as residential. So the council, on their own accord, or based on the advice of the planners and the mayor, um, rezoned some of those properties as residential. So you had, you know, still, still some commercial, but you also had residential as well. This took the property value, or the, yeah, the property value down about two hundred thousand dollars because commercial in that area was, um, more valuable than residential. And so the investment group actually sued Sandy City as if it were a taking, right? As if it were eminent domain. And that case went all the way up to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court says that, um, losses in property value based on a zone change is not illegal, it's not unconstitutional, and it's not a taking. Um, their quote was, "It is simply the uncompensated burdens one must accept to live in an ordered society", which I think is pretty darn good line. And so the takeaway from that is that you, as the council, do not have to, um, change a zone or not change a zone based on the end economic result. So I think what happened is probably as this training, uh, came out in nineteen ninety-eight, through sort of a game of telephone, it became this idea that you can't consider economic value when you do a zone change. So the clearer way to put it is you don't have to consider that it will drop or, or rise based on your, you, you, you don't have to base your decision on that. And that's the rule. Does that make sense, the difference between the two? You, you don't have to not zone something because it will diminish the value of. And conversely, the, the other thing holds is you don't have to approve something because it will create more value for the property owner. As long as you are, as long as you are making the zone change based on the health, welfare, comfort, well-being of the, of the residents, you're fine. And that's it. That's really it. Um, the next training the mayor wanted, if you don't, I'll, I'll stop for a second. Do you have any questions on that?
I was just curious if that applied to variances as well, because that was a big thing when I was on board of adjustments, was couldn't consider, um, economic impact.
I don't know. I will, that, I'll write that down as my training. As the next one.
Still the idea of the board of adjustments to that, that is a consideration they can take into consideration.
Yeah. Yeah, I, i- if that same, a- and again, I'll double check on that. But to me, the same rule would apply, right? Is like, as long as we are following our rules, the end result is, you know, that's, that's the price of owning land. That's the gamble you take. You get reward, but it, there's risk involved too. Um, the other thing the mayor wanted me to go over next time, um, is the, the whole administrative approvals of subdivisions that we used to do, and we don't do anymore. And why do we have to, um, why do we have to approve those when all the boxes are checked? So that'll be my next train. Any, any other ideas, any other things that you think about when you're, when you're up there on the dais doing the vote? I'd be happy to cover it. Okay, I was doing a, oh, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just, uh, I've talked with a lot of people who have questions about when we rezone stuff and developers. And I find it interesting when they, when they balk at our right to zone or not rezone. Um, part of living in a community is you're, part of living in a city is you have a city council that can help guide how our city looks and feels. And so land use zoning is, is our only tool to, to help decide how we want our, our city, our community to, to look and feel. So, um, that's how I think about it every time I come up with a zoning thing. I just think, you know, what, what does the city, what do we want as a city, as a community to be in this spot? So that's just my comment.
Yes, and that's exactly right. And that's why it's so important when, a- at the time of the zone change. Because after that, as we'll discover in later, um, trainings, and as you know, you're, after you've changed that zone, then the people who own the land can use that zone for all the purposes it is intended. You lose your control. I mean, you've got development agreements, and that might be another subject we want to talk about at some point. But, um, yeah, that's, that you're exactly right. And then, and that's essentially what the Supreme Court is saying is, you know, that this is your power. This is where you have the most of your power is to change these zones.
And I will just add that there are those at the state level that would like to take away our power of land use control. And, uh, so, you know, if, if that's important to any, any of us in the city, we should probably let our representatives know that that, that is a hard no. So thanks.
Thank you. Um, and one, one other bonus trivia. I was doing a puzzle this morning, and, um, I didn't know the answer to this. Who is the only Spice Girl named after an actual spice?
Ginger.
I got it. Ginger. That's it.
No tie.
Anything on the council calendar?
Actual future agenda items.
I think that we have four people now who would like to see the performing arts unit on an agenda supplementing, um, that in the city. So I know I would like to see that, and are are you still on that?
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items?
It's been easy on me tonight. Council reports. Somebody's got to have done something.
Several of us were the hometown, uh, pick-up, I speak. When was that? All I know, Scott organized a car show, and that was a big draw. And there are a lot of people there, said they had like five hundred people come.
They, they did some changing and you sent out a I still can't read even my, my descriptions and everything, that three millimeter print.
The busy spreadsheet.
Anything else on council reports? I did, uh, last Friday get to, uh, represent the city of the Watlau Darum, how they say the word. Uh, they were having the first annual, or the first international, I hope I can say the word right, Trepitaka chanting. And they asked me to speak at that along with fourteen other people. They kept saying I was a featured speaker, but I was right in the middle of everybody. But it was a very interesting time. They had, uh, representatives there from all of the different, uh, Buddhist temples throughout the state. Uh, they had a group come from India, a temple in India to be there. The Trepitaka is basically their volumes of scriptures. Yeah. One of the speakers actually gave a, a brief explanation of it. Then he handed us out a ten-page flyer. And he said, look at the back page, and always, you know, this came from this, and this came from this, and that came from this. And he said, now you can understand it. And I said, okay. But it was a very interesting time. They've, uh, said that we'd be invited to more of their ceremonies and that. They wanted to make sure we were welcome. So, while with all of the other my hometown and, uh, national light-out events we've had, we've been pretty busy. Any other reports?
Well, let me, close session.
Okay, no need for a close session. Tom, would you like to make the last motion?
We'll do.
All in favor?